But I'm not going to screw it up again.
Okay.
I have recording.
You're on here.
Lovely.
You're on here twice, actually, on the list.
Am I really?
Yeah.
Does that mess anybody up?
No.
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 You don't get two votes.
I was just gonna say that.
Okay, I think we're good.
Okay.
Call the meeting to order. So we, I've, uh, we're gonna be seating Justin for Bob Powell. And next up, any changes to the agenda, Paula? Anybody?
No changes from me.
Minutes of March 8th, 2021. Any corrections? Anybody changes? I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes as presented and thank you, Flo.
You're welcome.
You're batting like a thousand percent forever.
I'll second.
Look, Alex, any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous? Any abstentions? Justin, you weren't probably seated last meeting. So technically. Yeah, so you, you should probably abstain.
Sure.
Audience of citizens. Anything anyone would like to bring up to us that isn't already on the agenda? Okay, passing by that, we have no unfinished business. Uh, no really new business, correct, Paula?
Correct.
Okay, so we're gonna get right into the discussion of the subdivision regulations. Paula sent out a memorandum dated in March 18th. It was in the first batch of packet stuff that we got. So I had some questions. These are things that we haven't had time to study in forever. And this is quite the luxury to be able to have time to talk through these kinds of things. And I'm gonna reframe a discussion here that many of us might be familiar with, but especially for Justin and Alex. So the first question in that was, uh, you know, Paula, you had, they're, you're really your question? Why don't you go over and frame it?
The, the question was, um, what should the maximum length of a cul-de-sac road be? Um, and these are all questions that in the eight year, almost eight years I've been here, that when we're doing subdivisions, you know, a question pops up and it's not really clear in the regs. And then you guys are struggling with trying to figure out how to, how to respond to it and, or that's in the regs and, and you're not comfortable with it. Um, and I think this is one of those items that's in the regulations currently, but nobody's very comfortable with it. We currently allow a temporary cul-de-sac road uh, that can have an unlimited number of houses on it and a permanent. I believe I have the answer here, but I believe it's 18 houses is the maximum or fif- 15 houses.
I believe it was 15.
So it, and the reason that you need to be mindful of how long a cul-de-sac road is, it's a dead end road. And for safety reasons, if, uh, the example, it's always given if somebody at the far end is having a heart attack and a tree has fallen down across the road or there's a fire and it does happen, um, then nobody can get through to, to help the person with a heart attack. Um, and most, most towns just want to, um, make sure that safety is, is being taken care of. So it's, uh, just thinking about how many, um, houses should be on, on a cul-de-sac? How long it should be? Um, most towns are in the 1500 to 2000 feet. One of our last cul-de-sacs, which is technically a temporary cul-de-sac, is Wickford. And that has 2,400 feet long. And our regulations talk about residences, which on Wickford, we actually have 31 residences. But we have 16 lots because one of those lots is a condo.
Can I help frame this a little bit, Paula, for?
Go for it.
Those of you, um, so this question dates back to a regulation amendment that was proposed by Mike Delai about 30 years ago. When he was doing Wickford Village, it might've been 28 years. How old is, I'm not Wickford, um, Heritage Road. I think Heritage Road is about 30 years old.
Yes.
So that said, he proposed a regulation revision that would allow for future planning, quote unquote, that was only theoretical and didn't have to be realistic. And the commission bought into it then. So where that's come to bite us, um, a bit, has to do with, uh, looking at Heritage Road with approximately 80 houses there, 85, I'm guessing. I might be off a little bit. And the reason that many were allowed in Heritage Road with a single access point uh, off of another through road. Uh, and the concept here being that when we have a potential or when we have a, a through road to another road, then there really is no limit on the number of houses on a road that we can put because we have two points of access to that. But on Heritage Drive, there was a theoretical exit path out onto Route 87. Uh, approximately where the, the only house, I think, in the lake areas for sale right now. So there was gonna be a, a, an access point, but it was only theoretical. So the idea was that if you proved that you could theoretically put a road in future, we could consider greater than 15 houses on a cul-de-sac. And it, it never proved to be a realistic approach. It was, it was something that just allowed very long single point roads. So the question arises, do, what kind of limits do we want on cul-de-sac length or number of units? Is the current limit of 15 realistic? From my perspective, the worst case scenario is Wellswood Road going into Island Woods with all those houses and a narrow country road leading down. There've been many times that, that Island Woods has been cut off from any type of emergency access with a, a tree down on that road. Uh, it hasn't caused a catastrophe yet and we, there's not much we can do about an existing uh, single point access point. And the same issue came, uh, available when the lots that the Rams developed came to be proposed on Wellswood Road. The question was with a single point road, how could we allow more lots if already we were well exceeding the number of lots that we allowed? On a, what we call a cul-de-sac road, meaning a single point might be a better way of describing it. So, oh, that's, I'm trying to frame this with a lot of information, none of it taking a stance on anything. I, I can say, when you look at modern subdivisions like, uh, Columbia Landing, which is a wide road with night wide open, uh, going very long on a cul-de-sac like that is probably less risky than on Wellswood Road. Uh, or in the Island Woods or Heritage Drive is relatively open. So going beyond the 15, which we've already gone well beyond and have denied some additional lots, re-subdivisions because they, we were well past the 15 number and there was no potential for a future throughput onto Route 87 or, or any other road. So the question is, do we want to do anything about this? And what are the variables that we would consider if we chose to expand this? Is the current number reasonable given modern road, road building standards? You know, a lot of questions and I just, we want to collect everybody's thoughts and see where we want to go if anywhere with this.
Rick, is the current, is the current number of lots 15 regardless of the length of the cul-de-sac? I'm trying to just to follow, I'm sorry.
I don't think we have a limit, do we, Paula, on cul-de-sac?
No, but it's, it's a permanent, permanent cul-de-sac is 15 lots. I don't think we have, I'll, I'll look while you guys talk, but, um, I don't think we have a maximum.
Yeah, we've never had a discussion about lack, maximum length of a road, but we have, there is a maximum number of lots. Good question. And any thoughts?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, the safety issue and, and not to disagree with Paula, but you know, if that tree fell down in the first hundred feet of the cul-de-sac and the person lived at the sixth house, it'd still be an issue.
Right, oh, yeah.
You know, um, I think the, the, the important thing that comes to my mind, I'm doing, living on Columbia Landing is maybe we could do something in terms of the width of the road. I think that's, that's what's coming to my mind is the safest thing to do is to make the road maybe even wider than Columbia Landing. I don't know, that's just a thought that's gone through my mind. I, I don't, you know, and, and Rick and I, you know, and, and, and all this, I mean, we deal with homes that are on cul-de-sacs. And I'm thinking of one over in, in my world, I'm pretty familiar with and that probably has 50 houses and it's probably, God, it's gonna be a mile long, but the road's wide. I mean, and I don't see anything wrong with that, I guess.
Just, um.
I don't, I don't know about who's gonna build a 50 lot subdivision, but that's another issue.
We don't have too many la- too much land left for any sort of a large.
No, I know, we don't, we really don't.
Uh, one thing to do is to have.
Rich was trying to weigh in.
Sorry.
So I don't, I don't see a, a problem with the amount of houses and the length of the road. I mean, lot size will determine a lot too. If you have big lots, you know, 15 houses can be spread out over a long distance. Also, if it's a decent road, I mean, if you want to talk about trees, if trees are all of a sudden falling down, you, you have trees falling down, two trees could fall down on Route 66 and you can't get through the middle, you know? You know, it's, and every fire truck carries chainsaws on them. I know, I was a fireman, you can cut through when you have to pretty darn quick. I think the quality of the road has a lot to do with it. As for quantity, I, you know, we're already limited to density based on septic tank and other factors, you know, in, on properties. I don't think you need to go crazy on this.
I, I would agree with Rich, just to give my two cents. I think regardless, I, somebody mentioned it before, if you have the sixth house or the 20th house and you're blocked right at the beginning of the road, I mean, trying to prevent things, all things is, is difficult regardless. But I think the way, the way that I would look at it is if I have a thousand foot stretch of road with two access points or a thousand foot stretch of cul-de-sac, determining the number of houses on it, to me should be the same regardless. Um, but yeah, I, I think less is more with us personally, I would echo what Rich said.
Well, the, I think the reason this question, um, came up and I, I can't see everybody all at once, I have to scroll back and forth on my iPad to see who, if somebody wants to speak, just speak right up. The reason this came up is I thought that the current limitation of 15 houses on a cul-de-sac wasn't supported by the, the, the safety. I, I don't believe it's a big safety issue. I think expanding that, and you know, this is for the most point, only a very theoretical discussion because the current economics of land development are, you can't afford to put a new road in, but that may not be the case in 10 years.
Right.
But, but it was, yeah, with road building is what, Paul, it's probably what for a 26 foot wide road? At least $400 linear foot to build that road now.
It's in that neighborhood, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and then you take the engineering costs and the survey costs. You're, you're into a lot at a bare minimum before you buy the land of 30 to $35,000 per lot, just for road and infrastructure costs.
Don't, don't forget the amount of open space that's taking land off the rolls too. I mean, we're looking at taking the biggest area.
So that could be a fee in lieu of also, so it gets, it starts to add up and up and up. And, you know, we, we're talking about an issue that is of looking way forward for us, which is a nice position to be in. Cause many times we feel like we're playing catch up on issues. And it's nice to talk about this when there's no pressure about this issue. And we don't have to take action on it for quite some time. I, there's no, no danger here. But I felt that it was reasonable to allow for longer cul-de-sacs. And almost certainly, um, if we have cul-de-sacs with lots of frontage lots, a, a developer is gonna come along and want to extend a, a current subdivision and add more rear lots so they don't have to build road at the end of a cul-de-sac if the ratio of rear lots to front lots is logged by our subdivision regulations permit that. And so we, but there are limitations on where they can put those driveways and such in the regulations. But I think some longer allowance. And, and the other thing is, you know, somebody, uh, Tom, I think you mentioned road width. And who is our, our former road foreman before the guy that just retired?
Oh, now, uh, what's his name? New Mac?
Pete New Mac. Uh, so he would come into our planning and zoning meetings and say, I don't like roads over 24 feet wide because then we, we, it's really tough to plow them. So going forward, even though we had Columbia Landing, which is probably 28 feet wi- wide, Homestead Lane, which is 26 feet. He didn't want wider roads than 24 feet. He loved Whitney Road.
Two passes. It, it, the number of passes they have to do, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. You don't have to clear from curb to curb either. Um, so what I'm hearing is, I like.
Some information on the feedback that we had received in prior meetings. I think everybody likes a little wider road cul-de-sac. Now making it too wide is, is probably not re- practical. I'm sorry, Paul, you were, you were saying?
Um, I was just doing a little bit of a recap. It's, I like, instead of calling these cul-de-sacs, calling it a single point road. Um, I think that's a, a good phraseology. And it, it, to me, just looking at Wickford Road that goes on up to Tungus, that whole spur there. That's 2,400 feet. That doesn't seem that long to me.
No.
For that number of houses, so it, I'm not sure, uh, to me, 24, 2,500 is not a bad number. And maybe at a certain point, maybe it's, you know, 1,500 feet for 20 lots. If you want more, then you add two feet to the width of the road and you can go up to 2,400, 2,500 or something like that.
I would be more in favor of adding width to the cleared shelf, although that doesn't ensure that it'll be cleared in perpetuity. But with modern road building techniques and the whole shelf has to be relatively sanitized products. Um, you know, adding, you know, maybe add, adding to the width of the shelf that has an, an, that is completely unobstructed might be more realistic. So we don't have ultra wide roads that aren't character with the channel. What is the shelf?
The cleared area off the side of the road, a little like shoulders and stuff.
In newer subdivisions, it's all grassy, it's where the, the, the cabinets for utilities are. Uh, it, it's, it is also a graded area that then becomes planted afterwards. But what it means is you couldn't clear it to, and, and the, the town's right of way, or not right away, but the owned strip is what, 50 feet, Paula?
50, yep.
50 feet, so if you have a 26 foot wide road, you have, uh, you have, uh, 24 feet left, you have 12 feet on either side of the road. And modern roads are probably plunked dead center down that 50 foot strip. Um, and Paula, is that a requirement that they center the road on the 50 foot?
Well, it's, it's only on new construction. I don't know that there's a requirement for that. I don't recall seeing that in the subdivision.
I don't, I don't either, so, you know, they, they could theoretically, but to have, um, uh, a longer cul-de-sac based on a, of the fact that we have mandated by the regulations, a shelf and that, um, the shelf has to be a minimum width to go past a certain length is probably a simple approach to this to give some design flexibility to potential developers without adding a lot of cost. Cause if you don't have to pave it, that, you know, the cost to improve that shelf area, you know, and, and a, a cleared, planted, stabilized shelf area, we would look to Paula to do some research to get us some verbiage that would be good. But I can see going up to 3,000 feet in, in length, um, with a, you know, maybe having standards for the shelf, the minimum width, um, you know, up to 1,500 feet, from 1,500 feet to 3,000, an expanded shelf area for safety reasons.
Yeah, it sounds good to me.
That, not like we're going in the right direction. Is, is.
Yeah, I, I think Paula's idea, 2,400 feet, you know, the Rickford terrace does not seem like a lot.
So more than that, I don't have a problem with, as long as we feel it's a safe, a, a, a relatively sane approach from a safety standpoint.
Question, is the shelf owned by the, by the lot owners or owned by the town?
The town, because the town owns a 50 foot wide strip of land for every road, even though the road may only be 26 feet wide. Not for every road, but for every newly developed road.
But like on, uh.
25 feet from center.
On, on Homestead, I, I noticed that the, uh, that, that the all the owners, uh, take care of that, mow it, it's.
Oh, yeah.
Grass right up to the, so even though it's tech, it's, it's, so it's not like they own it, but the town has an easement, but it's the town actually owns that 12 feet into their lot.
Yeah, and people, and there's no adverse possession law that lets you take land from a town. People just use the lawn right up to the road.
Oh. Okay. Didn't know that.
Some of our older roads.
Many, many roads, many roads of that.
Are, are older roads, some of them, there's about two inches on, on, in some places on curves.
Right.
On the old roads. Um, and I've, I've seen places where, uh, most homeowners don't realize that they don't own to the, to the pavement. Uh, when we're talking to people in town hall, an awful lot of people are like, oh no, my house is, you know, 75 feet back. Well, not, you know, this is what, there's a property line that's, you know, you need to think about the property line. But it's, uh, what some homeowners do because they think they own that is they'll start planting trees and shrubs out there. And then it's not quite as passable. So something in the regs would have to require that it's be maintained as, as, at, an area that an emergency vehicle could go through or.
But ask, uh, ask, uh, what's your name, but how much the state owns on state roads? Some areas is a lot of people's property.
Yeah, some it's 80 feet. Well, it's not people's property, it's the, the state has owned it for, for a long time.
Ask Vera what her front lot would look like if they wanted to open that up.
That's true. If you take a look at, at the 711, um, the, the state owns way into X property, what looks X property there.
Almost, almost up to the island, right? Almost up to the pad on the island.
Yep, yep.
So it's a good question, Larry. It's, uh, but you know, I think some other caveat in a potential longer subtle cul-de-sac regulation might mandate trees no higher than X height within certain distance of the road. Um, meaning if a developer is gonna go for a longer cul-de-sac, let's say we allow a 3,000 foot cul-de-sac and up to 30 homes on a, on a, a non through, in a, a single point road or 40 homes or something like that. Um, having some regulation stipulating that when, at least when it's developed, that isn't towered by 105 foot pine trees on left and right. Not that we have that kind of foliage here, but.
On, I think 3,000 foot is kind of short. I have a 350 foot driveway and that isn't that many lengths of a drive, my driveway.
But I, you know, I, I, my mind is open to longer too. I just, I want to do it.
Especially if houses have, you know, a 200 foot frontage on them. You can gobble up that, uh, you know, two, 300 feet frontage. You gobble that right up in no time.
True.
There's also rare, rare lots, you can have, uh, one every six lots can be rare.
Well, there again, now we're starting to get into, we don't have that much land to develop that big, you know?
There's land out there, you know, it just is this way, and it's not cheap to develop because it's not all the, all the optimal land has probably been parceled up.
There's a lot of ledge, there's a lot of wetlands involved and a lot of it that's left.
Yeah. And we don't have that much.
And they're getting ready, open spaces getting ready to take everything around Hunt Road and all that whole area back there. Island Woods all the way around by Pine Street, which is a big chunk of land when that's all said and done.
That's it.
So what, what type of numbers, um, should we throw out? Cause I'd like to get a perspective as to what other towns do.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look at this and I'll, when I, when I start drafting things, I'll, I'll put in a number and then.
Well, no, I'd like to get some feedback from the commission before you go out and do your research. Any, any specific numbers we should throw out is ideas that we have in the back of our minds. Nothing binding, I'm just looking for ideas.
Well, if you're putting a limit on number of houses on a permanent cul-de-sac, then that'll probably dictate how long the road is right off the bat. Or, you know, it's quantity, quality or quantity of travel going down the road, if anything, that would have an effect on it, you know, on a.
Well, let me throw some numbers out, just, and I have no perspective on these. What about 50 houses on a single point road? 100, what about no limit?
Hmm, houses?
How long do we want to go? You know, we have a hundred odd houses, 125 between Wellswood Road and Island Woods. How, how comfortable you, would you be with that if Wellswood Road was 26 feet wide and had a, a 12 foot shelf on either side with no trees on it?
I drove down in Wellswood and I don't have a problem with it. There's just some choke points with traffic, that's all, you know, at the stop sign. But we get the same thing on Hunt Road and 66, so it wouldn't matter if that looped around and came out on the other side. You still get traffic, you know? Even if it wasn't a cul-de-sac.
So, so any ideas on numbers or we want to leave this in Paula's hands to come back to us with some feedback?
I like, I like, I like the 3,000 feet though.
At least 3,000.
Yeah, this might, yeah, I might, I'll pre-apologize for everything being the new guy, but I, I, I'm more interested in kind of the logic and reasoning behind the number instead of just, just what the number is. I, I, to me, that's important because we could throw 100 feet or 5,000 feet, but why? I think we need to a, answer the why, or at least, uh, maybe I need to figure that out on my own, but that's, that's what comes to my mind.
You make a really good point, Justin.
Cause it can be arbitrary.
One of the first, and I told this to Rick the other day, when I first started working here, um, Jerry James came in to meet me and I, I was, this is my second time I've been at town hall and Jerry knew me from when I was here before as a finance director. Um, he came in with a very, he's always a serious guy anyway, but he came in with a very serious look on his face. And he's, he's, what's his title, Rick? Emergency preparedness.
Uh, safety coordinator.
Safety coordinator.
Yeah, he's a, he's a past fire chief too.
Yes, yes, I know that.
For those that don't know.
He, um, he was very concerned with Island Woods and he charged me with figuring out how if somebody in Island Woods needed a, there was a fire somewhere in Island Woods and a tree also came down, which trees do come down. How do you, how do you deal with that? You know, find me another, find me the back way in. There is no back way in. There is no back way in. Um, so the, if, if we had a, a tree come down on, we did have a tree come down not that long ago on Wellswood. If at the same time there was a fire, the house would have been gone. There's, you couldn't have gotten down there.
Wait, you get the comment that you could, that, uh, if the firemen have chainsaws, they wouldn't take too long. It's, it'd be a delay, but it wouldn't be forever.
It wouldn't be forever, no, but it would, it would certainly be a delay. All I know is Jerry James, I mean, the look on his face, he was really, he has been very concerned and he said he's lost sleep over this.
We, we should, we should, uh, we should ask the, uh, some of the people in the fire department, what their feelings are on this. If that, if that's the driving uh, thought behind the limit on this thing, we should ask the people that are tasked with, uh, was being able to, uh, to respond in an emergency.
Yeah, I would agree with that, because the solution, because the solution is multifaceted because well, you know, again, as somebody already said it, but if, if you have a tree down at the beginning of the road, whether you're, I, I understand that there's a link that you can reasonably deal with, with a fire apparatus. But if you're beyond that length, it doesn't matter at that point how long the road is, practically speaking. So, so the, the multifaceted piece comes in, I, I think that's a great idea. You talk to the, to the fire department, say, if, if this situation occurs, what are the ways to deal with it? I mean, we probably have some say in how, how that could eventually theoretically be dealt with. I, I agree with that, but you know, there's, there's also a practical side, I guess that's just what I'm saying.
Yeah, the, the reason I like the, uh, 3,000 feet, Rick and everybody, is that of the traffic flow in and out on a daily basis, if you live near the beginning of a uh, cul-de-sac that's gonna be 3,000 feet or 2,500 or whatever, and you're the fourth or fifth house in, you've got, what, how many trips do they say for a household per day? Five, six? Um, it's a lot of traffic. And if you don't limit it some way, and then they say it's 6,000 feet, you know, you've got that, you, you've got a, a great deal of much more, you know, of, of traffic going in and out of that, that one spot. So that's why, that's why I think that the length should be limited.
Well, I think it should be a case of, of, uh, then it's a case of, uh, length and or, uh, number of dwelling units, because you got a very long road, but, but, but few dwelling, dwelling limits, so.
Yep, you could limit that way.
It's traffic, then, then it should be, uh, the, the number of dwelling units.
I mean, we're, we're right at the end, so we don't get it, but sometimes when you're walking, you, you notice the traffic flow in and out. It, you know, at the beginning of the cul-de-sac, it's substantial. And if you have 3,000 feet, that's a lot of traffic, that's all, I just, that's all, that's my concern.
Well, we have some good examples of that. We have Wellswood Road. And we also have Heritage Drive. So take a look at the linear feed of all the roads in Heritage, on Heritage Drive and the related streets there. And I. And I think if you, you went in two hundred and fifty feet from Whitney Road. You probably never feel there was a lot of traffic going by you with a hundred, probably with, I'm guessing almost a mile of road in there, maybe not.
You don't think, you, you don't think you noticed the traffic with that, if you were close to Whitney?
Spent a lot of time on that road and I've never felt I was in a high-traffic neighborhood, but I haven't been.
This is a lot of traffic. When you buy a house on the cul-de-sac though, you're looking for privacy. You really are.
These are all good points. Maybe Paula, if you could take a look at what the regulations are in about three or four. Similar profile towns, um, you know, I, I wouldn't go too far. I wouldn't, wouldn't even look at Mansfield. They make everything so.
Well, yeah, yeah. Or Avon.
Or Avon, yeah. I, I, rural towns around us, you know. And there's some towns that probably haven't thought this through as much as we have, and I don't want to name them. I don't want to insult anybody. But, and I'm not saying that in a demeaning way. I'm just saying, look, look for some examples that you feel would be appropriate, maybe three or four. I don't want to go crazy with it.
Colchester has a number of them. And Lebanon has a few, but Colchester has quite a few.
This, this, but this begs another question. The idea that a longer one with a temporary cul-de-sac. I really would like to get rid of that. There's nothing productive has ever come about having that around. It's caused controversy. And it's made the whole process subjective. When there was undeveloped land between a point at the end of a, of a cul-de-sac.
Yep, yep.
Anywhere else that wasn't developed, that became a theoretical path that has never been realized. So I would like to eliminate that and come up with a very concise, easy to understand. And to your point, Justin. Founded in some scientific logic for that, that, um, perspective on the length of the cul-de-sac. And I, I think a big start there is getting a little input from the fire department or anyone else in town. Rich, I'm sorry.
One, one other thing it creates when you say a potential through, it gives a false sense to people own the land that they can do something with it.
There you go.
And we've had that up in that division up by the lake where that was that one extra lot, not long ago, I think it was about a year ago. That just creates a lot of headache. The, everything needs to be in layman's terms. That's simple to understand. So the people that move into that area understand what their future is, not this potential through and. Now you're going to put a road through here. Now more traffic is going to come when you connect it. Cause now start shortcutting through, you know?
Hopefully we could make our regulations with fewer words and more simple. You know, by eliminating a temporary cul-de-sac and a reference to it, no.
You know, I really don't have a problem with the length. It's the quantity of houses and you can do that by, um, frontage limitations very easy. You have it in certain areas, you know, and, and that'll also take away the amount of rear lots you can have. The more frontage you have, the farther apart that every sixth unit is before people can go in.
That's right.
Good points. Okay. So yeah, clearly I want to get on the table, Paula. We want to get rid of the temporary cul-de-sac.
Yes, I, I heard that loud and clear and thank you very much. I think that's been a problem. I've run into many problems with us having the temporaries.
A lot of what was formed our regulations over the years is where we've seen problems. Like we have that limitation on the number of rear lots because at the end of, what's the road opposite Lake Road as you go up?
By, by, um, EJ. Yes.
Oh, Laurel Rent Road, Laurel Drive.
Get the Laurel Lane. You think you're, you're at a landing strip of dirt, dirt driveways.
Yeah, my son lives there.
I'm sorry, Alex, will you put, we're trying to talk.
Yes, I, 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 a related question. Is there a regulation, how big the cul-de-sac itself has to be? Uh, say for a fire engine to turn?
Yes, yes. Fire trucks have to make a turn.
At the end, yep.
It's in, in the, in the subdivision regulations. There's a whole street on, a whole section on streets and highways. And it's, you know, the cul, cul-de-sac has to be X number of feet wide, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
That, that and the school bus has to be able to make it.
Turn around, yep, yep.
I'm on a cul-de-sac that doesn't conform and it's a nightmare both for plows, for everybody.
Do they dump, does the plow dump all the snow at the end of your driveway?
They do. They're very nice about that. They try to clear my driveway, then they end up, because there's, it, it's a nightmare for the poor guys. I, I'd rather just take my snow blower and, and make their life easy.
That's because they hold you responsible for being chair of planning and zoning and letting them make that small cul-de-sac.
That's that black star that's on the telephone pole by my house.
You mean the one that's cut off at the bottom?
The one that's cut off. Take mine out. That's all they do.
Yeah, those, Rick's, uh, cul-de-sac was created, uh, in the thirties. Long before there was, uh, regulations on things like that. There are all the cottages that were around there.
Yeah, but back then nobody used them in the winter really, right? They're all cottages.
Right, right. You're probably right. Wow, we did down there, Rich.
No, I'm sure they didn't.
That's when men were men and they sent their kids out to shovel the streets.
Okay. Uh, next up is, uh, how many lots should a new subdivision, um. Have before we require a cistern? I just, I look at all the extra cost that cistern adds. Onto a subdivision and it breaks my heart. You know, then ultimately we're making it more expensive to live in Columbia with the cistern environment, but this is a react. We had.
As a member of, being a member of fire department, I have, I'm done now, but. I, one thing that has happened is every single surrounding town has tanker trucks. And they practice, and they practice tanker shuttles. And they are extremely fast at getting tankers in. I don't know, you can talk to the fire department. There's a rating that they do testing on how fast and how much water they can get into a town. I think that's gotten a lot better over the years. Not to mention building codes, we get less house fires than we used to. I'm sure you know that in the stats, but I think that should be a factor in it too, you know? I understand a cistern and what's typically, how many gallons are in a cistern?
Fifteen thousand.
And do you know how long it takes to use up that fifteen thousand gallons of water?
I have no idea.
Doesn't take long. It's a, an Olympic-sized swimmer pool they can empty in about two or three minutes. Once they get going.
I don't know when this regulation was added. It's section thirteen.
About fourteen years ago, if I recollect, and it was at the direct request of the fire department. And you know, we're very deferential to requests from the fire department.
Well, yeah, there, we got volunteer fire department. They save us a lot of money. They, they deserve that respect and the time that they put in.
That was the sentiment and it is a sentiment still, you know, and, and if you think about it, I, I think we only have two cisterns in town or three.
Three.
With three, we have one on Homestead. We have one on Wolfwood Road, and now we have a new one on Route sixty-six.
Then we have four, because there's one at Walt's subdivision. That has a cistern.
All right, then, how, how many water points do we have? How many water points do we have? I know there's one over where Chesboro and Pine Street and all them. Meet up. There's a hydrant set up there for that pond.
Homestead may not have a cistern. I think it has a pond there where the water.
So probably what you need to do to answer this question logically is sit down with somebody in the fire department. Who knows where all their water sources are and what the availability is. And you plan for it from that point of view. They're going to put a subdivision in that's a long ways, like, you know, maybe down the other end of Wellswood, but you got a lake not far. Or pond not far away from there. Then you might want to consider a subdivision based on how long it would take to get water to an area. You know, up on sixty-six, you've got lots of fast places to get water from. Yeah, Hebron down the road. There's a water source down across the street from Ted's over in that area. You know, there's a lot of sources, so you got to strategically look at what you have available for water versus just. Saying X amount, you need a, a water source.
Right.
And it's probably best to sit down with the fire department, somebody who knows, because they, they drill for all that to see where the water is, how fast they can set up. Get it out and create a tanker shuttle. I think that would be the best place to start.
So I think the question to ask the fire department is, we're just taking a critical look at parts of our regulations. And we'd like to review the requirement of a cistern in a subdivision. And is there a way that we don't need to do it and still, um, uh, keep with, with safety standards that you're comfortable with?
You could probably, you could probably get those marked on a map, kind of like you do with, uh, wetlands and, uh. The lake subdivision or the lake divisions in town, you know, you got the A, B, and C. And you can say this area needs water, that area needs water. And if you divide in there, that's when we have to have it looked at for starters.
See, I don't understand the technical part of this. I'm sorry, Paula, were you going to try and?
I was just gonna say, I, I, what bothers me is, um. This is sort of ran, this is random. I agree with, with you, uh, Rich. This is random in that it doesn't matter where the subdivision is. And you're, if you're only putting in three, um, house lots or more, so if you're only doing three. You just spent fifteen thousand dollars for each lot to put in a cistern, because it's about forty-five thousand dollars to put in a cistern.
Provides you have the right, provides you have the right ground to dig and.
Well, yeah, yeah, right. But it's about what it costs. And if you've got soil that'll handle a septic system, you've got one that'll handle a cistern. The, um, it just, it seems a little arbitrary and, and to me, it seems like it should more be. If there's a place in town that we need water, we should figure out how we can best get water there. Not just a random, well, if a subdivision pops up, let's make them put in a, put in a, um, cistern.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, it's all, yeah, I was gonna just say quickly, it's almost like it's making the, if there is a problem, it's almost making it worse. Because it's putting the focus on the wrong thing. Because you, if you create a subdivision, you have to put in a cistern and. By the way, there's, you know, there's a water access three hundred feet down the road. I mean, that's.
Right.
It does nothing, you know, yeah, I agree with you.
Or a subdivision that's across the street from another subdivision and there's one across the street. I mean, it.
Exactly, it makes no sense.
And, and if you were going to do it, I could see it, if you're doing a. You know, if the, if you want to do a three thousand foot road, maybe halfway up, you have to put a cistern. And maybe it could be tied together to, you know, I.
A fire truck can drop, easily drop three thousand feet of five-inch hose from a water source up a three thousand foot, uh. What you call it, cul-de-sac.
Right. Well, you need to have a cistern somewhere if you're, I mean, it, to me, if that's, we should tie the. Water source, you need to be able to tie these together, I would think.
Well, let me, let me throw out a concept that I think we should analyze and I haven't thought this through. So maybe we require a cistern on subdivisions, uh, larger than a certain lot, number of lots. Uh, that may be waived with a recommendation, um, uh, from the, um, fire department. Uh, that there, or, or, or affirmation that there's an alternative water source within usable distance. To that subdivision or something along those lines. I think the idea here is let's make it easier. To get, get, uh, uh, property developed and less expensive without giving up any safety. Rich, you're bringing up a lot of valuable input here because of your fire department experience. I, I'd love to have the fi, the fire department weigh in on this and say, how do we make this simpler? Yet keep every last ounce of safety we think is reasonable. And, and if we, they give us a recommendation, we'll ask Justin to your, your, um, uh, verbiage. Let's ask why, let's understand the underlying science.
I, I think, you know, right off the bat, you can get a map and you can put where the water sources are, I believe. The fire department probably has one.
Want us to do that. I want the.
They probably have that, Rich.
I'm sure they have that, yeah.
Yeah, I want their, them to weigh in on a proposed regulation and I don't want us to be the, the firefighting experts. I got better people at that.
You know, we don't need to waste their time either. If we just start by looking at it ourselves. And then get, build up some questions, then sit them down and, and talk with them about it, you know? It wouldn't hurt to know where it is ahead of time.
You're, you, you have the lead amount of expertise on this on the commission.
I tell you what, with all the stuff that you're dealing with, with a volunteer fire department, they love to help out. But at the same time, the more information we can have for them, the less time we have to take off of their free time to dedicate to it. You know, you know, just like when somebody comes to us, doesn't it feel good when they come with a lot of information? And instead, so you know, we want to do the same, you know, we can request that map, take a look at it.
Like volunteered for the commission to take lead on this.
I can work with them. I don't mind. I know so many people over there.
Well, you've been a wealth of information in this conversation. I say that seriously.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a lot of things they have there. You know, they have the forestry stuff to get around stuff. It, it helps to know that the differences, you know, that all the equipment they have and the training they do. And then you always make them feel good and ask their opinion.
Oh, just for, um, reference, we're allowed to have a three-hour meeting tonight because Yukon women are not playing.
I got five dogs here. I'm not allowed to have a three-hour meeting. They're all.
So I think, Paula, so we want to start to collect some information about this. Think, I think some relief is in order to a developer is really where.
I, I, I think so too, yeah. And maybe the two, maybe these two things can be tied together too. Mike, Mike Lester is the fire marshal. He's also, he's connected with the fire department, um, and he's paid. Um, and I see him in, in town hall. Um, so I, I can start with Mike Lester and, um. Get some conversation going about, about some of this.
Okay. So the next item up is how do we calculate fee in lieu of amount for a one-lot subdivision? We had a lot of controversy about this, looking back, not controversy discussion. So how do we let somebody divide a, a lot off of their current parcel? Without paying a fee in lieu of for the whole damn parcel, you know, and I, I just, I think a, a reasonable approach here. And I don't expect to come up with a resolution to that tonight, maybe not even in, in-depth discussion. But I think, I think, and I just want to know if everyone else agrees, how do we make this reasonable? You know, people own fifty acres, they want to divide three acres off for, either for sale or for whatever. How do we make this easy to administer and not have to have, uh, the building department keep track of a lot of stuff? Cause that begs to the next question down. Um, and, and actually I'm going to suggest, after what I just said, unless everyone, someone really wants to weigh in. Let's talk about that last question. Should the fee in lieu of amount be required to be paid at the time that the milar is recorded? Um, or should a lien be paced on, placed on every new lot? I, I brought this question up and I, Paul, you may have also brought it up and I don't want to take. Um, uh, you know, claim that I, I'm the only one who's brought it up, but our current process. Of collecting money for a fee in lieu of at the time that it's sold to the next person, doesn't work. We haven't been collecting fees appropriately. These lots had no mechanism in place to mandate that this fee got paid. And we're giving an interest-free loan to somebody who's developed the land that otherwise would have had to pay the fee in lieu of. That it's paying the fee in lieu of at some point in the infinite future at a, at a rate from many years before. And, and it just, and it doesn't work and it creates an administrative, an administrative nightmare for. The, um, the building department staff and Paula, you might want to elaborate on it. I strongly feel that if a developer comes in and develops fifteen lots and we demanded a fee in lieu of. Of the pre-developed value of the raw land that we should get that fee paid of at the time. Because if they, we didn't go with fee in lieu of and we went with an open space dedication. They would have incurred that expense in its entirety at that time anyway, by taking land that they gave to the town or some other thing.
Yeah, it, it, you're right. It's, it's, it's difficult. The way things, we, we now have a policy. Cause I came to you guys and asked for a policy so that there's at least a policy now that the next subdivision. The policy is that a, um, a lien is put on each lot, um, if we do that, the, per lot. But it, it's not been that way. Um, and it's been just, um. I require it in the, in the, uh, the list of conditions for a subdivision that I, I ask. That I offer to you to, to approve is, um, when it's a one lot, I, I ask for it. Um, as the milar is filed and that way we have some control over it. But on these, these larger subdivisions. Um, we, up until now, we've not had any. Um, we, up until now, we've not had any control and it, it would be better to have the, the fact that it's recorded on the deed of each lot. Um, within our subdivision regulations and not just a policy, but at, at least at this point. Um, our next subdivision, um, I'll at least be able to get that, that has a fee in lieu, I at least will be able to get it. Um, deed recorded so that when a closing happens, it's just automatically paid. Um, and Fairview Farms has been doing wonderfully. They, they are paying every single one. Um, as it, as it uh, lot is sold. Um, they only have one lot left.
What were the fee in lieu of per lot there, Paul?
Three thousand one hundred and three dollars, I think. That's memory.
Probably way less than the value of the cistern per lot, the per lot.
Yes, the, the cistern cost a good forty five thousand. And there's six lots, six new lots.
But we had no, we had no mechanism in place for prior subdivisions where this fee was due and we haven't been collecting some cases.
There's, in some cases, we've not been collecting and we're working on it and and the town finance director is, is working on it too.
Are you trying to go back, Paula, on the ones? I didn't know if we could do that.
No, I don't think.
No, no, we cannot. No, we cannot. We can just keep. Dunning people to pay.
Right. And I don't know if we have that right, really.
Done them?
Oh, if it's owed to the town, the town can collect that owed it. I, I, I don't think there's any question about that. Question is, can you uh, collect the money affordably?
Right, right. That's kind of what I mean, but you know, you're chasing the, you know, the tail, yeah.
The.
Sell it to one of those debt collectors. They're, they're a nightmare.
And they take the majority of the money.
Anything. Some people think it's better.
Yeah.
Good. I don't want to interrupt. Can, can we get back to that one lot something, you know, the, you know, I'm thinking of the family situation we just did recently.
Family is a little different because in our regulations, and I think that's a, a good thing that I, I. Would assume that the commission would want to keep is if somebody is carving off a lot for, for one of their offspring. Then there is no uh, fee in lieu unless it's sold within five years, five years. It could be ten year, whatever number you want. Um, this is like the, our friend on, what was that, Gallen Road, Rick?
Oh, yes, lovely, lovely, lovely.
Um, where it was. Um, they were cutting the lot, they were getting a divorce. Uh, and they were going to sell one house and and build on another. They didn't tell us, tell you guys the whole story. I heard the rest of the story, but it was.
Don't need to say that.
It was a fifteen acre parcel and they were basically cutting it in half. Um, and it's, uh, when I first typed this. Question, how do we calculate the fee in lieu about for a one lot subdivision? The answer is, was difficulty. We just assumed figure out a way that it's methodical and not having to. Reinvent the wheel every time we do it because it will happen again and it, you know, at a time when it's not a family member. Um, and I, I think there couldn't be ways that we can do it that um. It's, maybe it's based on the assessor's value, so they don't have to, the assessor's market value, which is pretty darn close. And then when you're taking ten percent of it, you're, even if it's not that close, it's not that big a, it wouldn't be a loss to the town or the. The seller.
Well, just.
Subdivider.
Same part of that, if we could, Paula, with the current methodology for a fee in lieu of um, determination. Is to have an independent assess appraisal done by. A, a formal appraisal done on the property because we're dealing with one large parcel of property and the, the, the seller pays for that appraisal. And it has to be a mutually agreed upon appraiser. Uh, and that's, that's pretty clean. So, but this really, I, I think where we're aiming with this is. We have a landowner who wants to carve off a lot like we did over on Chuanic Road or what was, was it Chuanic Road?
Yeah.
Yep.
So we allow them to do one lot. And you know, I think it's a reasonable thing to allow a, a large landowner to carve off one lot and have a procedure. To allow that to happen that. Reasonably treats the town and reasonably treats. The, the landowner. All that said, I, I mean, the idea that we collect the fee when we carve off a lot, I, I, I have a sense of guilt about that and. That's a, a discussion for another time. You know, Rich, you and I be, might be on opposite sides of a lot of things. We're not on this one.
No, we're not.
I just think it's, it's another tax that I.
Extortion.
Part. And you know, I, given what I do for a living, maybe I have a jaded view of this. I want to, you know. Encourage development, but I think it's a regressive tax. Uh, because it, it does. It's, it's, it is what it is, but I don't want to get into that discussion tonight. Because you know, that's not what we have on the table right now unless you all want to put it on. But what I'm saying is. Having a reasonable way to treat a larger landowner. So there's less, the idea is we want less pressure on them to sell their land and develop it until they're ready. And how do we treat landowners in a respectful way?
I just wanted to add um, something that's come to my mind, but let's say a guy with a family has twelve hundred foot of frontage. And they've got three kids. And they cut off a two or three acre parcel for kid, for kid number one. And we do the thing with the five years, no thing. What do we do for two and three? You know, five years from now, he wants to cut off another three acres for his other kid.
I think we do whatever they want.
I, I think it's every time.
Okay, so it's every time we can, so we can, we can then, okay, then.
If it's going to kids, yeah.
Yeah, you can't, you can't penalize somebody for, you know, working their butt off, buying land. And then wanting their kids to stay on that same land. You can't penalize them.
Let me, let me just throw off a counter argument that I don't necessarily hold to, but I just want it to be on the table for you to consider. So that the best use of a parcel of land from the town standpoint. Isn't where you nibble off two hundred feet of frontage, two hundred feet of frontage, two hundred feet of frontage. When that parcel of land may support development of a road system that's better for everybody. Um, and so. If we allow these, these parcels of land to gobble up all the frontage and leave just a fifty foot strand. Uh, 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 strip of land to a, a, a large rear parcel. Is that the direction we want to go? And that's a question we could ask ourselves and debate and answer. Before we really loosen up on the, the um, the in lieu of. I encouraging that kind of approach to land development in town. Because it could lead us down a path that we don't feel is optimal.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we could insert a thing that they have to, they have to, I don't know, certain amount has to remain frontage. I don't know what that.
Boy, that's, you know, now you're making a co, a simple. Process complex, and I don't mean to demean what you said, Tom. I, I just. You know, I believe in the landowner's rights, but also the function of planning and zoning is to enhance. Um, the few, the future development of, of the town to keep the character the same and. We have to ask ourselves a question if we come up with a regulation. That encourages nibbling off these frontage parcels to raise money time after time after time. Is that the direction we would like to see this go? And that's a question we should ask and we should answer. So this begs a more broad question. So this one question here may lead to a long discussion, maybe multiple nights just on that one issue.
All you have to do is look at the property line maps and that's what they've been doing on properties forever. You just. You can see little chunks all the way down the street.
Yeah, you're right.
Big landlocked areas, which you know, I think open space would love that. That's natural open space.
But the other, our ask, you look at something like Homestead Lane, which is a nicely developed parcel. Um, and everybody, I think everyone would agree it's a very attractive subdivision in town. Uh, you know. To, to do it in a way that um. Is, is keeping the character of the town. Going forward and preserving vistas and things that, you know, all that frontage parcel development may not be what we want to promote. We may want to promote some sort of other type of development through our regulation. I just don't want it to be punitive. And I, I ju, I don't want it to be unreasonable. I just. When we do have somebody approach us that comes up with a, a one lot, one parcel they'd like to do. I don't think they should have to pay the fee in lieu of on the whole parcel. That's my point.
Right, I understand.
What we did on the, the one lot subdivision in, in Chuanic is the brand family property, that big farm. The. We asked the. Um, developer to um, offer what he felt was a, an appropriate fee in lieu. Um, and I also calculated it based on, I took the assessor's value and increased it a little bit and, and took the number of acres and, and divided it out. And he was offering about a hundred dollars more than what. I had calculated was an appropriate number. So I, I thought that was pretty cool. But anyway, what we did on that one is, and I think we, I think we can handle. A large lot when they're covering up, cutting off one piece because I think the Chuanic, I think we. You guys worked through figuring out how to do that. Um, and I think we, I think it was done very well and I think that's the model we should be using for these big lots where they're cutting off one. And what we did is on the, on the big parcel. There's on the milar that was recorded that shows the, the new little lot down in Chuanic. In the middle of the big parcel, it says, this lot is not a buildable lot and the open space has not been. A status of the open space commitment has not been satisfied. I don't remember the exact quote on there, but it's very clear that. There's still, you know, when this gets developed, there's still, you know, the open space or if it gets developed. It's um, you know, the open space um, requirement uh, on that piece has not been met. Um, but the, the hard ones, I think, are the ones with it are like fifteen acres and they're cutting it in half. Those are the hard ones.
Yep, yep.
Those are the hard ones and I don't know what to do with those. It didn't help, the one we had, it didn't help that it was a difficult situation anyway. Um, but.
And we didn't get all the necessary information either, so.
No, no, no.
Good point. Okay, let's not spend much more time on this tonight. We're gonna circle back to this. We, we've started a conversation. Uh, we, I've heard a lot of good stuff. So that's that for this evening. Um, I'll circle back with Paula. I think we need a little more information. We'll continue the discussion. It's quiet now. You know, no matter what's going on in terms of a desire for lots, the economics don't support people creating new roads. So we'll, we'll continue to see a subdivision come up here and there, which are um, a division of lots on an existing road, but. We're not going to see much in the way of new roads proposed for a, a long time.
I, I concur. We do have in sometime next month, apparently. Uh, we're getting a four lot subdivision on Hop River. It's at Wetlands right now. Wetlands Commission. So there is one coming, but it's right along the road. Um, one thing um, that you, you guys may want to consider. Um, we may want to start working on the subdivision regulations as a subcommittee. Um, for a while, FOI was Freedom of Information Commission, FOI Act, a commission. Was saying that anytime more than one member was meeting, which means two. At least two people were meeting that were on a, on a committee or a commission. It was a legal meeting and minutes had to be taken. Um, that, that has gone to Connecticut Supreme Court, I think. Um, and it's been decided that if you don't have a quorum, it's not a meeting.
Thank you.
So we've, we did the ag regs and one other regs, oh, that the uh, commercial regs as a subcommittee group. And it seemed to work really well. We would meet in the afternoon. Brainstorm a little bit. I'd crunch what I'm hearing and then a week later or two weeks later, we would look at that. So that the, a group of people were, were uh, getting down to um. Uh, the nitty gritty on, on the regulations instead of taking everybody's time. Um, so we may want to, we legally, we can do it easily now. So we may want to do a, a subcommittee on the, on the subcommit, on the subdivision.
We're ready to set up a subcommittee. Let's gather more info before we decide to do that.
I just wanted to pass that out. That just came out this past week.
Appreciate it. Everyone concur with that? I'd like gather more information as a group before we decide to form a subcommittee.
I agree.
Okay. All right. Uh, good. Are we all set with this tonight? I'm gonna move on.
Uh, is, so that means that the, that the subcommittee can have up to three numbers?
Yes.
Four, it gives four, okay.
Yep. And it's, it's members of the, of the commission. You can have three of you and five other people that are not on the commission and it's to me. Um, the, one other thing, I, at our meeting on April twenty sixth, we have a public hearing for the. Um, the, this little ag regs that we're going to revise for, oh. Um, for, for, for a winery to be able to also have a brewery. And to reduce the lot size for a farm store. We could also on that same night have the public hearing at least open on the Lake watershed. Um, I talked to Dan O'Neil today. He's, um, he's, he felt Elmac was all set for the. This iteration. They had already seen what um, we gave to you a couple of weeks ago. Um, he will talk to them again when they meet the first week, meeting of, of um, April, first month, first Wednesday of April.
Um, we, on the, the twenty sixth then, everyone good with that?
So we'll schedule it for the twenty sixth, okay?
Yeah, we'll review it before we, we, we publish, publish them before the, we'll have time to do that.
Um. We have to have it out in, I think it's.
Fourteen days?
Fourteen days, yeah, fourteen days ahead of time.
So at our next meeting, we'll have time to look at a, a finished version. Go to public hearing.
Okay. It's, nothing has changed from what you, what you have in your files.
Okay, just to send out a clean digital copy to everybody. Through what's posed, as it's proposed. And it doesn't have to be marked up, just in its finished form would be fine, I think.
And there's one at which the, I only had one question which was never answered. We're a little bit off topic. Um. We, in the regulations, we in, for the, the watershed. We say if, if you, we will allow a waiver if this, that, and the other is. You have to have a public hearing and all sorts of, it's allowing people to get a waiver, which I think is probably a good thing. But it seems very cumbersome. It takes a public here, I, I just. We can talk about it during a, a, a public hearing. It can stay the way it currently is, is phrased. But it just. I don't think we've ever done it, have we, in twenty years? Waived the, yeah.
I'm making notes.
Okay.
I'll talk with you about that.
Okay.
And streamline it. I would like to do that also.
Okay, all right. Sounds good.
Okay, uh, so we're gonna move on from this into anything under communications and reports? Nothing? Do we have anything under communication and reports?
I don't.
Paula, okay. Uh, anything anyone else wants to bring up? I mean, the item I have under open discussion is about the affordable housing. It was an article that I, I saw in the Hartford Current that probably many of you have already seen, but. It helped me make sense of what all this discussion has been about. And I'm hoping they don't impose some draconian. Rule on Columbia that we can't implement practically. Rich, I knew you were gonna want to speak on that. I love you.
I did a little research on this also myself and I, I've heard of stories of this happening. Oh, seven, eight, nine years ago. And you can be set up for a lot of lawsuits and that's what they're trying to do. So the article I read today came out of Harvard Graduate School or something. You know, they, they talk about affordable housing. There's two different things, affordable housing. And then there's low income housing and they're, they're different. But not hugely different. So affordable housing, a lot of the claims are, it actually helps your neighborhood. It brings income in. It uh, gets more diverse communities in. And it raises the value of your property. That's not a hundred percent true, not according to Harvard anyways. Um, most of the articles you'll read, they'll say it does, it does raise your, your property values. If you're in, say, a Windsor or Bloomfield. It can raise your value, your property values if you already have a lot of. It can raise your value, your property values, if you already have a lot of low income housing. You know, the assisted type of housing, it can raise it in those areas, but. You know, the more affluent, by the way they termed it. Generally can bring down some of your property values. Because, you know, that's the average value of houses. You know, it it's not the bigger percentage of it. But. The problems I have with it is everything is subsidized, either through tax dollars. Most of the companies that benefit from this are um. Not-for-profit organizations who set it up, they get tax credits. There's a lot of incentives for all this to come and. If low income housing and all this stuff really worked so good. Why do all the towns close to cities and stuff struggle who who live on this stuff? You know. Why does government uh, create these problems and offer solutions to fix them? So what kind of problems we had asked ourselves, could that potentially bring for us? Low income housing means you need public transport, transportation. A lot of times it morphs into that, because these. Don't get me wrong, I like to help people. I like to pick people up, brush up, brush them off and set them on their own, but. You know, if you have people out here that you have to travel for work out here. Now you're gonna need transportation systems, you know. It's something you gotta really be careful of. And like I said, you know, most of this money comes from your tax dollars. You can call it grants, you can call it whatever. A lot of the businesses that make money are the ones that are not for profits and. Most not-for-profits, the people make a lot of money in there. The business may not make a lot of money. But a lot of the people that work for them make significant money, especially the people that run them. So, you know, this is part of my point of view. I could go on. I could tell you stories where. In on Long Island, there was some pretty good sized towns in there that have very diverse uh, communities. And we're following all the laws and we're still sued for tens of millions of dollars. Even though they were obeying everything, just because they find loopholes in wording in the regulations that you write. It's just stuff to think about and hope and pray. They don't throw this down, down all the small towns throats. Cause.
Well, you know, the, I think a more more um, a lower level question, maybe it may be. One that is gonna be. Pursued. What would that 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 we have to look at is, we don't have sewers. And we don't want to be compelled to have sewers for um, for. By the state, you know, I I want them to stay out of our business. I don't know how I other, how better to put it. And I don't want. I I'll be. Very concerned if they create. A a scenario that's as well thought out as many of their other projects. You know, it'll it'll be very concerning to me and, you know, we, I, we should do what we have to do. To to help people where they need it, but. Mandating how we plan our land in town or do our our land development and and uh. Town planning. Based on these kind of the but the criteria they're pu- putting forth, I mean.
Well, you know, here's something else I read.
One at a time, please let everybody talk before you go.
Fine. No, just, you know, the the point is, I I I just, I I. My blood started to boil when I read the article, quite frankly. I thought of legislative overreach from on the state level. I'm I'll leave it at that.
They they did say one thing, that not everything is multi-tenant buildings. So they can do, you know, two families, single family, it has to be affordable.
They can be accessory of. To the single family units. Can I, am I allowed to talk now?
Nah, let's not let him.
What they're trying, what they're trying to do, in in my opinion, is that by October. They want that the towns that do not seem quite diverse. To figure out a way to get twenty percent of the people, you know, under under the poverty level. Does anybody know what the poverty level in this town is? Percentage of people who live under the poverty level?
No, I haven't looked in a long time.
Well, I think we gotta find that out. I'm gonna call Mark and and Steve tomorrow. I was talking about it earlier, but it was after five o'clock. I think that's where we gotta start. We gotta see what, where we stand in terms of the poverty level in this town. And then they want twenty percent. Uh, the regulations to um. Reflect that. Um, you know, I I can understand Rick's point of view and also Rich, but you know what? Times are changing. And um. We're gonna have to go with a bit of the flow of this because the the diversity has been, you know, very time, we have not a very diverse population in this town. And it's gonna, it's gonna come cracking down on us and I I I feel it will be.
But the point. I'm sorry, when you're done, Tom?
I'm I'm done for a while.
The the point is, you know, given what you and I do for a living, we're both realtors, Tom and I. I don't see anything that exists at the town level that is a barrier to somebody who wants to come into this town, other than. The fact that that there is no overwhelmingly inexpensive housing stock. We didn't have a mill that failed. And with lots of multifamily buildings built in town to service it. And that's, there there's a certain natural flow to what what occurs where. And it hasn't been because of any um, overt or less than direct or unkindly actions on Columbia's part. And to to mandate at the state level that these towns, a town like Columbia has to do X, Y, and Z. Because they think it's appropriate. I. A pushback, pushback till I drop.
Well.
You know, that's is on the public record. Why? Because I don't think. It, I don't think we've done anything to create whatever situation needs multifamily housing. And the 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 efforts I've seen to build multifamily housing have been expensive at best. And they they barely made a dent in it, or they've created large.
You don't, you you don't think in the thirty some ideas you've been on planning and zoning, there's been no concerted effort to limit multifamily housing?
No concerted effort, but no demand for it. Nobody's asked to do it. If anything, we've we've been begging. Uh, uh, you know, to to get multi, uh, more dense development for seniors to keep them in town. Nobody's come to the table to build it.
Affordable housing by law, if somebody came and proposed a subdivision to Wyndham. Uh, to, I'm sorry, to to Columbia for affordable housing. Um, by law, there's a different set of rules that they can follow. Where it's smaller lots, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Nobody submitted that because we don't have. Water, water and sewer, so it, you know, they could build it, but it was, it's not gonna be affordable.
And we'll keep our minds open. I haven't seen closed minds. That's really what I'm trying to say. The minds that I've seen is, I see good nurturing, supportive, empathetic people. That have been doing their public service and serving commissions with a wide open mind.
Let me, can I add about, can Rick, can I add about thirty seconds and then I'll be quiet. I and this goes back to a lot of philosophy I have basically around. Connecticut in general, because we have such all these small towns. If we had some consolidation and said they did this, say, for the County of Tolland or the County of Wyndham. And 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 made those percentages for low income, I think it would be easier to to do. When you talk about Columbia or Scotland or, you know, any of the small towns, it's gonna be a very difficult. Uh, um, situation to do and I and I agree with you, it's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult. But they need to come up with a better plan in terms of how they. Implement this rather than just trying to slam it down our throats. I understand what you're saying. Um, I'm not going back on what I do. I just do think that um. Connecticut in in general and and, you know, there has been efforts to uh. Exclude, I guess is the word.
Rich, what were you gonna say?
You wanna make affordable housing more affordable, stop making some of the benefits low income people get not so high. I can tell you stories.
Let's not go down that, Rick, let's not go down that line tonight. That's not part of this. Cause that's an open discussion with lots of.
When I got an employee that's getting seventy thousand a year in benefits. That doesn't know anything, how does that not have an effect on it? That's all. It's part of the problem.
I'm not going down that road with you tonight, Rick.
Yeah, but you're you're bringing an issue that isn't on the table for us.
Sorry, that was a cap. Well, you wanna make it affordable, you gotta get rid, look at the whole picture.
But that's not a zoning but planning issue. What I'm trying to say is, I don't want. Well, I don't want issue uh, rules that are thought out as well as many of the things they think out in Hartford. Imposed on us, because I think we.
Part of zoning either.
Yeah, I I I I think we do a darn good job of running our here the way we do it. And I don't want them imposing poorly thought out rules. Imposed on us to say you need to do X, Y, and Z. When this, but we've had no barriers other than the natural barriers of not having a. Uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, not not natural, but we don't have an infrastructure to support high density development. And so lacking that and trying to to make us go down a road that doesn't fit the character of the town. I think it's our job to protect the the character of the town. Actually, I know that that's part of our job. So I I've expressed, I don't mean to overtalk anybody, but I, that's the zoning part of it. And and it's a, yeah, I want to do things that make for affordable housing if we can do it, but if we can't do it, we can't do it. And if there's sufficient affordable housing elsewhere. Great, you know, would I love to see single family homes for a hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars, brand new built in Columbia? Yeah, but it's not gonna happen.
It's an inappropriate overreach by the state, period, as far as.
Yeah.
Yeah, question. A question, what is uh, the least expensive house you can acquire? What's what's been sold recently? What's?
Sale, Alex.
Pardon me?
New construction or a resale?
Either one.
Falling down or move in condition?
Move in condition. Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred and thousand. Tom, would you agree with that? I don't think I've seen one sold for that price in the last twelve months.
There's there's been a couple in the one fifty to one seventy five range.
They're not looking.
Some rough edges.
They're not concerned with what you currently have that's affordable. They want more affordable. Um, one of the things that Columbia does have going for it. That most of the towns that they're directing this at, of course, it's buckshot, so all a hundred and sixty nine towns get it. Um, the, we have access, we allow accessory units anywhere in any house can have an accessory unit. We do limit the size to thirty percent of the primary. But um, many towns do not allow that and currently Wyndham does not allow that in the Wyndhams, which we've been. It's on the, been on the books, on our internal books on the commission, wanting to 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 change that. Um, we plan on changing it. We just haven't gotten around to, we've been working on commercial regs here in town. Um, and the other thing is, speaking of Wyndham. Wyndham, based on their criteria, we need to, they're looking for new affordable. So Wyndham needs to add more affordable housing. I'm sorry. That's. So it it's just not thought out. It's just, I I agree, it's not thought out. Um, and I, in for in Wyndham, I got in touch with our legislators here. Um, and asked them to um, to oppose, pose this for, from a Wyndham standpoint.
It's just, what do we, what do we have? About sixteen hundred residential units in town?
I don't have, if I, I wish I had my.
Range at some.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're talking what?
I, I know.
Ten, ten percent?
This is aimed at the Farmingtons and the Avons.
Yes, it is, without a doubt. Without a doubt.
In the northwest corner.
Yeah, Litchfield, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, can we move on from this tonight? I think.
Come on, we're having too much fun. Let's not stop.
With any luck, we will never discuss this again.
Yes.
Everybody has their opinion.
E- everybody who thinks I'm being um. Too too much on this, tell me, because I.
Well, not at all, no, God, no, not at all. It's 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 interesting discussion.
The article was very enlightening for me. It it helped frame the discussion. In a, in a three-page, you know, memo that that you got copies of, so. Great. Anything else? Anything, audience of citizens, anyone would like to bring up? Uh, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Paula, thank you for everything.
Thanks, everybody.
Do I have a second?
Get, are we off the record?
Nope. We haven't voted. Let's adjourn first.
I. Stop recording, Flo.